I'd like to convene the City Council, Iowa City City Council Work Session for Tuesday, December the 5th, Joint Meeting with Planning and Zoning Commission to consult about a proposed rezoning on near Gilbert, South Gilbert and Macaulster. So, Bob, are you going to speak first? Is that what?
No, I'm just putting up the slides.
Yeah, okay. So Ann and I, Ann Furks and I discussed this briefly, I don't know, an hour or two ago. And what I think we agreed is that I'd make a few introductory comments and then ask you to summarize commission ideas about what's good and bad about the proposed development and ask individual commissioners to weigh in as well. So let me start with those opening comments. First of all, I definitely want to thank commissioners for meeting with us tonight and giving us a chance to consult. Max, how are you? I'm not sure if you and I have met. Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just to make sure we're on the same wavelength, in our November 21, the meeting on November the 21st, the council unanimously signaled that we very tentatively were inclined to agree with the commission's three to three defeat of the motion to approve the rezoning. But we also thought it would be fruitful to consult with the commission before continuing the public hearing tonight and before formally voting on the proposed rezoning. Yep. During the council meeting, each council member indicated what the individual favored and did not favor about the developer's current proposal. And thanks to Sarah Walts, Sarah, where are you? Out there? Thanks to Sarah for preparing a summary of the improvements individual commissioners and council members thought were necessary. Thank you for doing that, Sarah. It's not as if you don't have other things to do. I think the main question before us is, what does the developer need to change in his proposal in order to obtain sufficient support from the commission and the council? As we discuss this question, we need to keep in mind that a supermajority vote from the council might be necessary depending on this and that. With that, let me turn things over to Ann.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, there was a, the vote was three to three. We had one member, just walking in the doorway, yeah, who had to abstain. So, three to three is a denial and that's the direction that we took when, I have to say, I think most everyone would have been willing to work, I think, to try to get some details and some things ironed out, but we're not, the majority, or the three of us were not keen on approving it as it is. And there were a number of reasons, I think, for me and for, everything's out in the notes and you can read through that very carefully because I think that they did a fine job documenting most everything that was stated. But density is a concern. The fact that this is kind of being sold as a missing middle piece. And as I go through, I mean, I carefully went through the South District Plan and I went through some documents about missing middle and I really tried to read through everything as carefully as possible again. And to me, if we try to pass this as a missing middle piece to the community, especially being a first piece, that this is going to be something that the community is not going to want in the future because it's such a large area. You've got almost 22 acres and all 159, or excuse me, I mean 196 units are in multifamily. Not one is non-multifamily. So I think there just could be with some work, you know, it's a difficult lot, I have to say, to develop and there are some positives. I think the fact that they're kind of using this block-like fashion to kind of approach the way things are laid out is a positive. And there is some green space still yet that's outlined. But beyond that, I think there've been requests for waivers and setbacks. I know that's something that in a letter that was sent by the applicant later today, they've laid out kind of a defense for that or a reason. But I think that, you know, if we were to have setbacks of 25 feet on arterials, if we wanted that, we would ask for that and we haven't. What we have is 40 feet for a reason and that's due to traffic and noise and also mass and scale of a building on the street. There's another area there where I think we're, they're asking for a setback from, to 10 or 15 feet when it should be 25. So these are the kind of things that have kind of, I think, if we take those waivers away and we look at it, there are ways to probably manipulate it a little and to bring out some of the density and to add something more of a transition, which is if you look at the comp plan, those are the types of things that are asked for. Infrastructure was another thing. There was discussion, of course, about improving the intersection and the extension of Macaulster. And we think it would be, I think the majority of us probably, even those who voted in favor of it, feel that building permits shouldn't be put in place until that's a controlled intersection and that the city would make a commitment to that because that is going to be a major east-west arterial in our community and it just continues to have traffic building up on it. And that's something I think you probably heard from the people who live in the neighborhood as well, so. But again, read through the minutes, it's all there, so. Building design, I think that there was some concern that the buildings looked too much alike. I believe there are four units basically that are put throughout this piece to create it. And it, the comprehensive plan calls for exceptional design, especially if we're going to have increased density in an area. And if I've looked through most of this, a lot of it doesn't even meet the minimum standards of design as it is right now. And again, that's another reason I could not say yes to this, just because it felt like it was really a big stretch in order to say yes and with some work, and that's what it needed, was some work in order to create something that is palatable for the community around it and for the community as a whole. I think, I mean, everything's kind of outlined in there for you, but the density, the fact that, I mean, this is a main thoroughfare and it's going to be coming through southern Iowa City and I think what we do here needs to have a positive impact and be something that we really can be proud of in this area. No one at all said that they were against affordable housing in the commission. No one at all said that they were against multifamily. I think what it comes down to is the fact that all of the units are multifamily. Even, I believe that the lots are all, there aren't on individual lots. I know Phoebe had some excellent points as far as where the garages are located and the parking for these, that it's quite a distance and when you divorce the parking from the buildings themselves, you know, you have a difficult time selling that, I think, to an older person or even people, younger people want to have access to their parking immediately, I think, or within an area that's closer. So, again, with some work, I think that could be made something that can be a positive and so we don't have to deal with that. So what it comes down to, I think, is design, infrastructure, density, missing middle, especially for me. So I know that's a quick overview and we can get into more detail if we have conversation back and forth about some of these things, but, you know, I just have a feeling it's kind of being set up in a way that it's all going to end up as rental and I think we need to have areas where there could be duplexes on corners and so that, make it a place where you can have rental units and that people might be willing to buy into them as condos because I'm really not sure that that's the case, the way that's was set up. And really to have a viable neighborhood, especially this magnitude, this size, you really need to have something where you can have, not, you don't want to impede the ability to have owner occupy, occupied people, you want it to be able to work both ways for something like this. And I don't really see that here, so. My two cents.
Other commissioners want to speak?
Okay. I voted in the affirmative for the motion and largely because I don't argue virtually with nothing that Ann says because she's always very well reasoned and well spoken. But I don't want to lose the good in pursuit of the perfect. The city has an identified, very powerful need for affordable housing and workforce housing. Johnson County, Iowa City are rapidly growing areas. We have to have a place for the people who work in this community, that clean the rooms and sweep the floors, to fix the cars, that they have a decent, clean, safe, comfortable place to live. So to me, it just came to a question of trying to balance that out, of trying to get this housing constructed so it's not down the road five, 10 years, but so that we have, we're doing something today to make that, to accomplish that. So that was just the whole thing, it was simply a balancing act for me.
I had similar feelings and it has always bothered me that we have this beautiful park and we really do not have any affordable housing close by. So I saw the details that could be worked out and it is, it's that balancing. Do we, if you add lots of conditions and get the price to build the units up and it then becomes not affordable for people. So, you know, I think that we all would support changes in it, but I felt that it was a project that needs to be done in some form, so.
Carolyn, do you have anything?
I was concerned about the density, but I really think that we need to be realistic about the need for affordable workforce housing. And that doesn't necessarily look like single-family housing, but a mix of types, I think, would be preferable and would more reasonably fit into the characterization of the missing middle.
I was kind of on the fence, but I ended up voting yes for it. I, because I think Ann did a great job of pointing it out, with the missing middle, you have one end of multifamily and then you have single-family and then you kind of have a transition between that with, like duplexes, fourplexes. And I feel like if you take out single-family, you kind of take out that transition. And so if we did it over again, I would like to see a transition between that and the single-family neighborhoods if we kind of did it over again. So that's about all I have to say. But, sorry, I just thought, we were off to a good start. I think this is a good start, but.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just a little details to it.
Another thing, I think, a point I wanted to make is that there really, in the southern district, we don't, we have quite a bit of affordable housing in this part of Iowa City and that's not to say that we don't want to continue to create that. But I think we have to look toward balance as well and that's why I think adding some other types of housing and transitioning would be in the best interest here. I think there are going to be other opportunities for townhomes and zero lots in the area and I really hate to kind of put this huge block here when we can also pepper it through in other portions of the South District as we continue to develop that area so that there aren't these big, massive blocks, but that it actually is more like missing middle, so.
Okay, good. That's very helpful. So I wonder at this point whether individual council members want to express, ask questions or affirm particular parts of what Ann and others have said or raise other concerns? I know, I know there's a list here that Sarah put together for us. But let's set up an extreme possibility here, that we need a supermajority vote for any development proposal to pass. What's needed? And it's hard to kind of guess the tea leaves or read the tea leaves to try to figure out what would get us to at least six-one on this proposal. So how about somebody just kind of starting off by weighing in with a particular response or question or whatever here?
For me, the minimum, the absolute minimum would be the infrastructure improvements.
At the corner, at the intersection?
Yeah, the signalization at Gilbert and Macaulster, I think absolutely has to be done before this kind of development and this much more density and traffic is brought to the area, just from a pure safety issue. I think that needs to be signalized. I mean, that'd be one thing.
I agree. What do the rest, does anybody disagree with that?
I would only add that I would be interested in at least exploring the idea of an always-stop sign treatment there.
Kind of right away, I think.
Yeah, right away and possibly, you know, for as long as we feel it's acceptable. I mean, Scott and Rochester, which is kind of in a similar situation, it's on the edge of town, transitioning from highway to, you know, the city limit, is an always-stop sign and it probably has even more traffic than we have here. So I see no reason, this is a very rural area in my mind, it's part of its charm. And I hope, you know, my vision for how it develops out as a district is that it retain a kind of small-town character. So, I don't know, my feeling is, is given the traffic counts there, which are less than 7,000 in any direction, that possibly a stop sign is something to look at. I know the, the one concern I have with that is that the, the intersection, the streets are wide, but they could be narrowed. You know, we know there is more capacity there than we really need and, you know, there's more roadway there than we really need. So I would be interested in asking staff to look at the feasibility of always, an always-stop there because I do think there's so much value there. You know, you have concentration of recreational uses, but you have to cross Gilbert to get to them. And you have to cross Gilbert to get to that incredible bike trail if you, if you live east of there. So I see an immediate need, you know, I really feel, and I feel that the stop signs might very well work. I mean, I think we have stop signs in Iowa City and in the metro region. Oak Knoll and, Oakdale and 12th Avenue is an always-stop. And there is.
It might be, it might be a transitional point. What I think is most important is for the intersection to be controlled so that people coming from all four directions have to stop.
Well, that's exactly right.
And, you know, in the short run, maybe stop signs are appropriate. In the longer run, maybe signalization. So maybe we shouldn't make that decision, but if you agree.
I agree with that.
We need to have the intersection controlled if we're going to support the proposal.
I'd like to thank Mike Tharp for putting together, there's a lot of questions about the airport.
Yeah.
And I think it pretty much spelled out the questions that were raised and that does help because we didn't have any information whether that was correct or not and I think the way he spelled it out really does help there. But yeah, the intersection is, I was just driving, coming from the south there and there was a car stopped waiting to turn and I was about 30 yards away, all of a sudden he decides to turn in front of me. And you know, you're coming in, you're going 35 or 45, so it, I just tried to go down there, I drove across to Langenberg, I was going 25 and I had people on my tail all the way across and the speed bumps, you know, it's, it is a problem down there, so. I mean, the speed limit and I think we could reduce that a little bit. And with the stop signs, we've seen it work right downtown. I think if that was done immediately, that would move this along a little farther. I still think there's some things about the setbacks that we need to discuss, but overall, I think the intersection is the biggest.
So I want to express a word that expresses the core of my concern. The word is neighborhood. It seems to me that this development should enhance and be compatible with the existing neighborhood to its east, but it should also make a transition from the single-family housing on the east to some higher-density structures at the far end to the west or near the intersection of Macaulster and Gilbert. And that in-between, there should be a full range, a broad range of missing middle-type housing so that you see and feel a transition. But the core idea for me is that it's got to feel like a neighborhood. It does not feel like a neighborhood now. When I look at it, you know, it feels like an apartment complex and I have no real problems with apartment buildings, of course, I've lived in them, but that's what it feels like. It doesn't feel like a neighborhood and it certainly does not feel well-integrated, if you will, with the neighborhood to the east.
Jim, if I could just briefly comment.
Sure.
I think for me, I think you capture what at least my view is, is I think we need to have a greater mix of incomes, a greater mix of housing types. And also, I'm going to bring up another product that's in a lot of ways totally different, but I think I want to bring it up anyway, is the forest view. The amount, and we have, that's not before us in terms of zoning, but the amount of work the developer went through in that particular case to reach out to the neighbors, to get their feedback, to get their input, was amazing. And so what I would like to see is that when this comes back to us, that the developer engages in a meaningful conversation to do outreach to the neighborhood. And I think for the neighborhood, at least from my point of view, I don't want the answer to be at least, no, nothing. So I mean, hopefully we can get somewhere between, you know, that they can meet in the middle, they can engage in meaningful conversation, and I'm hoping at the end result of that process, there is a greater variety of housing types and a greater variety of income types that honors the transition from the single-family close to Gilbert there. And I think if we do that, and by the way, too, I don't think this particular proposal is that far off. I mean, I think there does need to be meaningful changes, but it's not as if it's totally off the rails. And I think there's a lot of elements that I like to it, but it just needs to have a greater variety of housing types because I agree with Ann that this, just to me, is not missing middle. And if we're looking at missing middle housing types, we just need to stroll through various parts of our neighborhoods and we see all different types of housing that I think the missing middle tries to capture.
What do the rest of you think?
Well, with respect to the missing middle and Jim's notion of a neighborhood, the way, the way I've always tried to frame this is, what I'm hoping we can achieve here is what would be called a traditional neighborhood. Traditional neighborhoods, meaning a neighborhood prior to World War II, tended to be more a mix of housing types. And that's what Opticos, they observed that, you know, they're from the Bay Area, there are lots of examples of traditional neighborhoods in San Francisco, Oakland and Berkeley, and they codified it. But there, I mean, the missing middle is really a strategy to try to integrate into existing neighborhoods, those infill types borrowing from that range that dropped out from single-family to downtown. But with new development, I think what we're really talking about is a traditional neighborhood which tries to capture, as we see in the north side, I think to some extent, the Peninsula Neighborhood captures that quality. I think there are eight housing types in the Peninsula Neighborhood and it includes single-family through to multifamily. Now that's the Peninsula, I mean, here, I think one of the key issues with, with coming up with a concept is, we're not in the Peninsula, we're in the South District, so what, what does that mean in terms of the types, the distribution and so forth? But, you know, I've been a strong proponent of traditional neighborhoods and the use of the missing middle and as Ann said, I'm really concerned that we get this one right because if we don't, the notion of doing a traditional approach to a neighborhood design is going to be poison. No one's going to want to do it. But we do have some good examples. I would even say on a smaller scale, the Prairie Hill Cohousing is another example. It's four housing types. There, the lowest density is duplex. And then you have townhouses, a really interesting housing type, I think, that may have utility here, a fourplex unit that looks like a large house. And then you have the common house, which has some units on the top floor. So, and that's only seven acres, but the development is what, maybe half, in half of that area. So you have 36 units in three and a half acres. So I don't know that it's the density. I think it's, it's how we design this development that will make the difference. I'd just add, I'm okay with the reducing the setbacks. I think, in fact, there's a lot of open space, but it tends to be in kind of this, it's like a, this envelopment to the entire site, which you lose a fair amount of the overall percentage of the acreage to this ring of open space around the edge. I think as, as we said when we were meeting on this, you then end up with the housing and the parking feeling, in my mind, kind of concentrated. So if we can perhaps expand the envelope for the housing and then look at how we better distribute the parking and increase the housing types, you know, I think, I think we'll get somewhere.
Yeah, I don't want to echo some of the comments that have already been said. I would agree with Mike and kind of just the conversation around the balance. And so, you know, I'll be honest with you, I mean, this, this effectively to me is a huge affordable housing project. I mean, I think about it from that lens and I'm excited about it. But I would agree, I mean, from, you know, what other councillors have said around wanting to see more of a mix of housing types. I mean, I feel like the community, or at least the neighborhood, has spoken to some extent as far as not necessarily seeing that and wanting to see more of that. I do feel like it's a tough, it's a tough balance. My hope is that, you know, some of those conversations were being had and ultimately this was what was proposed with some of that conversation as far as what would affordable housing look like? Because, you know, when I heard you make your comment, Rockney, as far as, you know, this, similar to a forest view situation, and I get that, I don't necessarily know, and I'm just going to be very frank, that we can have a huge affordable conversation with the neighborhood to whatever that directional, whatever that direction is. I think that, you know, for me, I would like to see more of an expanded conversation if we're truly talking about, you know, looking at affordable housing from our workers, from all these different standpoints. And it may take a little bit more work, but I'd be interested in hearing about, you know, maybe some focus groups that were run from different groups across the city to what this may look like and how this could be incorporated from that standpoint. But, you know, again, I think that I would, I mean, I would agree with the sentiment that the transition does bother me, you know, it looks like a lot of blocks and that, that to me is a problem from just a kind of, you know, planning standpoint and how it, how it moves into the rest of the neighborhood. But for me, I think that, you know, again, not only necessarily just incorporating the community or the neighborhood closest to the development, but also thinking about, you know, how we can incorporate some more thoughts and feelings outside of just that neighborhood. It would be interesting to me to see a kind of a more comprehensive discussion and what that would look like from an affordable housing perspective as well.
I think it's absolutely crucial that this new development not look like and feel like something that is radically different from the neighborhood immediately to the east. That will create problems in the longer run. The developer needs to blend the two together. And that's, that's the challenge for the developer, it seems to me. And I think they're up to it, that they got to do it, if they're going to get my vote.
I think when you said, who said the Peninsula, I just have to say that the fact that you could meet anyone anywhere in Iowa City, anybody in this room or walking down the street and they could say they're from the Peninsula and it, anyone could live in that area, you know. It, I know, I've been to people's houses, students that I work with that live in the Peninsula and I know people. So there's a wide variety of people, I think, that live in that area. And when I see this, I see more of a buffer along the area where you have the single-family homes. And so it becomes its own thing and what you want is you want to be able to have people feel like they're, you know, a part of something, a part of the bigger piece. And to do that, I think it just needs some more work.
Yep.
Well, and I think what Ann just said, to be a part of the other piece, and I think when I hear the word "transition," it bothers me a little bit. To me, it's like, here's single-family, here's something a little bit less than single-family, here's, I think it's the way it integrates with the neighborhood, and that's kind of what's missing here. I think we do need that continuity, but with different density, maybe more affordable, but it needs to integrate with, and what John says, it's a neighborhood. And it is, it seems like that trail cuts it off, and we don't have that good integration, so.
Can somebody from staff remind me, that Prairie area, does that need to be, is that some water retention also? Is there an issue with building on that?
This is a, this would be water retention in this area. So I, it may be engineered otherwise, but I think this is probably needed to be open space for stormwater. And the way the plan is designed, the stormwater is directed through here. We can look at that with the applicant's engineer, but I suspect we will have to have some open space there.
That was my question, 'cause I was thinking that that was part of what had been said early on, and I think that's what, for me, as you look at this, kind of creates that barrier or separation between the current development and housing and what's being proposed. If there's, if there's the opportunity to make some adjustments with that, then to, you know, maybe to potentially have a combination of some single-family, duplex, fourplex, whatever, whose backyards back up to those single-family houses, then to me, it starts to flow together more. And again, I just don't know, from the water retention, what those possibilities are. But I think, as you go along that trail in particular, to try and do some backyards towards those single-family houses, again, with a mix of densities, mix of housing types that are backing up, and then, again, your, maybe your larger, more dense buildings as you get, get towards Gilbert Street, but again, a little more, a little more variety than what, at least what it appears as we're looking at this diagram, because as a number of people said, it looks like a lot of blocks. And I think, I think as we've discussed over the last couple of years, the idea that if we can develop new neighborhoods, when we have these open spaces that have a wider variety of housing types and price points, I think it's healthier for the neighborhoods, it's healthier for our schools. And I think that's critically important, as we look at school boundaries and trying to be able to have kids in walkable neighborhoods, that we aren't plopping down either high-density, low-income, affordable housing, or even large areas of really, really high-end housing. But that we're trying to, you know, to integrate that more, I think, to your comment, Ann. And I think what you were saying, and maybe didn't directly say, is you meet somebody from the Peninsula, and you have no idea what their income level is. Because there's all kinds of income levels, because there's all kinds of price points of housing out there. So just because they come from that area, it doesn't mean anything. And I think that's a good way to have it. So I would hope that with some tinkering with the border between this development and the existing development, in terms of housing types and sizes, that we could create something. During the council meeting, I asked about the setback. And I know the answer was, well, if you go from the 40 to the 25, you create more walkable, you know, slowing down traffic. I don't think that's gonna happen here. McAllister is gonna be a major arterial street, carrying a lot of traffic. I don't see those sidewalks being more walkable by pushing them closer to the street. I see it being more walkable if the sidewalks are actually pushed back further from the street, with more street trees, as John has talked about a lot, in between those sidewalks and the curb.
Well, the other thing, just to keep in mind, is, in looking this up, it looks to me like the right-of-way on McAllister and Gilbert is 100 feet. So it's a wide right-of-way. The setback, if you will, from the curb line to the, and the edge of the right-of-way on McAllister is 30 feet, just to the property line, you know, and then you're, then we're talking about 40 feet from there. So it's, that's one reason, I think, narrowing this. The setback actually isn't such a bad idea, because what you're saying on McAllister, I forget what, I think it's 25 to 15, you're still 55 feet, or 45 feet, rather, from the curb. So it's...
I didn't realize the right-of-way was that far.
Yeah, I mean, in the north side, they're typically 80 feet wide. Here, it's 100 feet. So you're already quite a bit wider. Yeah, I think, a phrase that just came to mind when you were talking, Susan, was, I think our goal is inclusionary by design. You know, we have inclusionary zoning, and here, if we can just accomplish it without making a point of it, it's just blended in, that should be our goal. And I think that's what a neighborhood should be.
Yeah, I like that phrase, in this context, for sure. Any other comments on this particular point?
I would just say as well, and this is just kind of, you know, thinking about what's going to be the property across the street from Gilbert, and then also with Terry Trueblood, you know, something along those lines as well. And so I think that was incorporated in some of the design elements, but thinking about that park, and I know you mentioned it, I think is gonna be just really important. And, you know, I think that some of the open space, or some of the conversation that we had prior to this was around that, but thinking about how that can be incorporated in some type of way would be just a really cool community feel, if that was a part of it as well. And again, that's, you know, I'm not a developer.
Could you restate that a little bit? If what could be incorporated?
Just how it, you know, the kind of, obviously, we've talked about the building types, and just how, you know, the open space, you know, we talk about, you know, the sidewalks, and what that means, and I guess I'm trying to think of, you know, how can it be, how can it be done, or how can it be built in a way that speaks to the park, to the Terry Trueblood? You know, what can we, what can we, I know that John always talks about, you know, how you change a street design is ultimately, you know, what you may perceive will be, you know, being, what you may perceive be being used on the street, based on how you design the street. And so thinking about that development, you know, how it can be designed in a way that speaks to the park and use of the park, or, you know, what way, whatever way that may seem. And again, this is a very abstract thought or abstract feeling, but I just wanted to not necessarily forget that the park is there. I know you already mentioned it, but how that could, I mean, work, or where the buildings are located to not necessarily block the view of the park, or some of that, I think would be important as well.
I think that the corner, the eastern part of the corner of McAllister and South Gilbert are crucial, in the sense that I think there should be some structures and activities there that attract people from the neighborhood and attract people from the neighborhood immediately to the east. And I know there's some language in the comp plan pertaining to this. I don't know if rezoning would be required, but what I'm imagining is that there'd be at least one, maybe two structures at the corner that would have some small-scale commercial activity within them, probably a coffee shop or something like that. And that, if it's at both corners of, both of the eastern corners of that intersection, then it could, the buildings could be designed in a way to provide a really attractive entryway into the larger neighborhood to the east. So I don't know if that would cause, if the absence of that would cause me to vote against a proposed development, but I think having that in the development would make it far more likely I would support a development proposal.
One thing to keep in mind is that there's already been approval for a convenience store across the street. And the Come and Go stores are very, very bright. Housing opposite them is not terribly pleasant.
I don't know, Bob, Karen, Sarah, is there anything we can do about that? Might think about it. I don't know if you have to answer that question right now, but that's a good point.
Can you point out on the map where, just for public, maybe?
Isn't it right?
Yeah, the northwest.
This property is zoned, community commercial, and it's owned by Come and Go. I believe that will require a special exception through the Board of Adjustment, and we can look at some landscaping and lighting standards as part of that.
Yeah, I haven't though. I'd go down instead of out, that's crucial.
Right. I hear what you're saying, Jim, about small retail or whatever on those corners. And in an ideal world, I really like that, but I'm also really reluctant to force that on a developer if, if they can't see the real desire from the community or from potential businesses to buy or lease that space. You know, I think when you, you know, when you have a Come and Go across the street, I'm sorry, that right there is gonna create a lot of competition for some of the types of businesses that might go in there, just because the cost for which they can sell things and the speed and everything. So it, I like the idea, but it would not be a factor for me in voting for this, because I just, I don't wanna see us start requiring that in neighborhoods, and then we have all these empty, small, commercial spaces, because there's no real demand. People don't feel that they really can make a living or have a viable business in those spaces.
We have done something in Saddle Brook, and Bob might be able to, I think that's where it was, where it was kind of mixed-use, and then it could transition from living quarters to commercial or work-in-home, kind of.
Work, yeah.
One of the original plans for Saddle Brook included a building or two with commercial on the ground floor. They came back and asked to amend that, and so it was designed so that it could be either-or, commercial or residential.
Bob, do you, Karen, or Sarah, or Ann, know how many units are located in the Peninsula? And then how many units would be located in this?
There are 410 units in the Peninsula. There are, this proposal's 196.
Okay.
One other thing to keep in mind is that the South District plan does show a small neighborhood commercial area further east along McAllister, the, McAllister at the corner of Sycamore and McAllister. And so there might be, you know, we have to pay attention to how much retail market there is down here, and which area we wanna focus that kind of energy, as the South District develops further, and we talk about missing-middle.
Jim, I'm really drawn to your idea of the gateway effect, and I think that could be achieved with the building design to create, and it looks to me, in the way the zoning is set up there, to do this, a similar thing down at Sycamore, so you have an opportunity to kind of, you know, emphasize that threshold effect. I'm not convinced commercial will be viable, but it, you know, it may be something we can flexibly consider in terms of the zoning, that it could go either way.
Yeah, I get the point. So for me, really, the bottom line is neighborhood. Will, I think the intersection, the development at the intersection, needs to signal very clearly, this is a neighborhood. And it's a good neighborhood, you're entering it now, that kind of thing, yeah. How about parking? What do y'all think about parking?
I would really like to avoid parking lots. I think, you know, when I look at Peninsula, and I think Prairie Hill, their approach was basically the parking bays along the main road going into the, into the, into the development, but no parking lots. I think, especially in the location where they are in the proposed plan, they're just plopped right down in the center. So whether that, you know, I don't know what the answer to that is, but it could be more, more roadways. You know, I was looking at Peninsula, the blocks are less than 200 feet long. So it may be that if we insert more narrow streets into the, into the development area, that would create more opportunity for street parking, which could better distribute the parking, rather than concentrating it. And, you know, those locations that unfortunately do seem to be kind of right where I kind of envision open space, you know, something where you would, it would be more a public realm, rather than a parking lot.
Yeah, I don't picture open space, I picture small, at least one small park, where at least one of those parking lots is, so that it'd be a place for parents to take their kids, and for others to...
When I say open space, I just mean, you know, common area. So yeah, the parking, you know, this is, this is an area where you have to expect households are going to have at least one car per household, so it, it's challenging, but I think, you know, it can be done if we, if we look at trying to distribute the parking requirement more evenly, rather than concentrating it.
But you do have to worry about, if you don't have enough parking, they'll go into the neighborhoods and park, so you wanna avoid that. So it's gotta be a very good balance between the two.
Yeah.
And there is a lot of open space right now, in between a lot of these buildings, but like you said, there's ways to get around.
Bob, could you put that other image up of the development, please? Thank you.
I think there are even a couple of areas there that are not, don't even meet requirements, where the parking actually facing Gilbert, I don't know, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are lot one and two there where you can't, they're open to...
These, this could be addressed with landscaping in that area.
Okay. Because we try not to have that open to a parking area like that, too, I mean, roadway.
Yeah, I would agree.
I mean, there's room to move.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, going back to Jim's comment, and maybe that was a little more kind of the articulation as far as, and I just kind of feel it, it is an interest. I was kind of thinking about going down McAllister Boulevard and thinking, what else is there? But ultimately, I mean, you're moving into the neighborhood at this point, and going back to Susan's point as far as, this probably, I mean, this is gonna be a thoroughfare, and so to that extent, this may be your first transition, if you decide to take that back way into the neighborhood. And so thinking about that, and also thinking about how you're, I drive this a lot, so coming down Gilbert Street, you know, just what you were saying, Ann, as far as any type of way to hide that parking, you know, John, your comment as well, as far as, you know, it does, it does seem like it's, it's not in block style, I don't see it as that, but just, I don't have a thing about parking. I just think that, you know, one, I guess, balanced perspective, I always want more of it when I'm driving to a particular place, but I don't like to see parking as this man has vested, especially if I'm driving past it in a particular way. And so how that's covered, or how that's designed, whether it's landscape, or even what those buildings look like, I mean, the buildings further south, I mean, you can see that there's, there's housing that's blocking that parking, I think needs to, needs to happen. I think I've changed my mind around parking on-street. You know, before, I just, it conceptually didn't work for me. Now that I live in a neighborhood that I do it all the time now, I feel a little bit differently about it, and so I see where you're going. I don't, again, I'm not sure how that gets articulated, but that would be interesting for me as well.
Sarah?
So one of the things that developers started out with, which is not allowed in the zoning code, is providing the parking on-street for, and so I think we just have to be careful as we go forward, how much required parking, we don't allow the required parking to be on-street, and one of the concerns of the neighborhood was spillover parking into the neighborhood. So what we were trying to get was, they were providing the minimum, and whether you like the particular parking arrangement, I know Ann had expressed Phoebe's concerns about separating the parking from the units, but, but they're not allowed to provide the parking on-street. And the idea was that visitor parking would be, you know, that you would allow the visitor parking to be provided on the street, and then that wouldn't spill over into the neighborhood, so.
I'll just throw into the conversation, you know, that, and I don't know where we are in terms of looking at the Gilbert Street design, but I think it's 50 feet wide now. And I think there is a possibility of, because I'm not, I'm not imagining bike lanes being in this, in this location, along the curb line, because we have the trail running along the west side there already. Anyway, it seems to me, there may be a possibility, given how wide that street is, to allow parking along the east side of Gilbert Street, the frontage of this project, not necessarily for, to count toward, you know, the parking for the dwellings, but... for, to count toward, you know, the parking for the dwellings, but providing additional parking for visitors along Gilbert Street, along that frontage.
I guess my concern is, is I don't want to try to introduce too many variables into the discussion. I'm a big advocate of various parking innovation, but at least for my own purposes, parking is not a deal breaker either way for this particular development, and at least for my vote, it will not sway, and I'll defer to the developer as to this particular point. But I think to your point, Jim, with that neighborhood and transition, if those can be the themes, I think we'll get there, assuming that they know what that means, and I know that they do.
Does anybody want to raise other points that we haven't touched on? Any commissioners want to probe us about any particular things?
Well, one point about affordable housing, some folks don't have cars, and everything I read is that we're moving away from everybody having their own car, or at least multiple cars, and having public transportation come here, and also emphasizing the accessibility by bike would seem to be appealing. It's, Gilbert Street's narrowly flat, so it's a good place to bike to, to get into the rest of the city.
I agree, Carolyn, thank you for bringing that up. The bicycle part of it, I think, is already clear. I mean, people, developers are going to build that into this project. But the public transit part, I don't really see that there yet, and it seems to me that needs to be built in from the get-go.
Jim, if I could, sorry, if I could add to Carolyn's thing, to me, this part of Gilbert Street seems like an ideal candidate for even road dieting, to even allow for those bike lanes on both sides. Because it gets, like you said, it's a wide street, and I think it'd be safer to cross for people to access Terry True Blood for road diet, and then you could put a traffic circle or a traffic signal, so people kind of have that middle refuge in the road, so they don't have as many lanes to cross.
Like, I don't know, from the intersection north, if, am I inferring correctly?
Yeah, correct. Because I think it goes down to two lanes once it gets to county property, doesn't it?
Well, I guess that'd be up to the council and staff, so not really the developer.
Just so, to give you, we are, you know, doing the study, the Gilbert Street corridor study. The area south of the highway is an optimal candidate for road diet. There is a desire, as expressed in the Bicycle Master Plan, for the potential for bike lanes along here, because this is probably our most popular bicycle route for people riding down the hills and back is a popular route, and a lot of people prefer, a lot of the more serious cyclists like to bike on the street. The developer has been very involved in, with the Gilbert Street study and providing feedback, and that road diet then provides a better transition for folks are not having to go across four lanes of traffic to cross sides of the street. And we've even talked about, you know, as development occurs down here, opportunities that may exist for median refuge islands. So for example, where you see the trail to the north of the development crossing over toward Napoleon, that's an opportunity there to create a median refuge island, so it's safer for people, especially people who might, you know, not be able to dash across a wide street. I mean, we do have people who cross through this area in wheelchairs, so that's a potential for the future, too. But all those things are being looked at, and you'll be hearing about, more about that in coming months.
I guess I just have one more thing that, I'm only going to be around for like six more months, I'm planning in zoning, so I'm going to say it publicly, but I've said it before in, talked about some South District planning, and the fact that, you know, I think, we talk about missing middle and missing, I think we could use more expensive housing in the southern part of Iowa City, too, and I think there's nothing wrong with that. There are so many amenities there, and you want to have people of all types of incomes having some skin in the game there. They want to be able to, like, be a part of Southeast Junior High or whatever, you know, I just think that, I work at the university, and so many people come in and say, you know, I was told, don't buy a house down in southern Iowa City. And why wouldn't you? Because they're affordable, based on, you know, if you look at the whole map, plus there's so much going on, there's so many things to do in that part of Iowa City. So I personally have no problem if someone wanted to build very nice and expensive homes there, as well as, and I'm saying as well as, affordable housing. The key is to have something for everyone there, to try to, I think, continue bringing this neighborhood, you know, as it develops, it's just going to become, it's just going to be a gem, I think, in the community. And that's why I don't want this to be just a piece of apartment complexes. I think it needs to be something more.
This is why I like John's concept of using missing middle concepts to produce inclusive by design.
I would just piggyback on Rockne's comment earlier in terms of kind of the make or break, you know, to help, maybe help the developers. I think we've all talked, the infrastructure and some sort of control at the intersection, and a better, and I know people say they don't like the word transition, but when you have an existing neighborhood and a new neighborhood, I do call it transition from the existing to the new, a little better transition from the existing to the new, and a little more variety, I think, in the sizes and design of the buildings that make it feel, that it is and feels more diverse housing types than certainly what this diagram looks like.
Anybody else?
The only other thought I have is this notion of, you know, how strong is what sometimes referred to as the public realm, you know, that realm in which we're, say in this instance, you know, we leave our homes and we engage with our neighbors. And what are the opportunities within this area? What's the, you know, the framework for that? You know, how is it that you encounter and engage your neighbors, the Peninsula and Prairie Hill, both, one element of that in terms of the housing design is the, and it's not every unit, but there are a fair number of front porches. That's kind of a transition in itself between, you know, the house and the sidewalk, so that you can hang out on your front porch, and it provides an opportunity for something to happen there. So how we develop that public realm and how it integrates this proposed development with the existing neighborhood, so that you can go for a walk through the neighborhood and pass from here into McAllister Court, and then perhaps even go further, maybe up into, you know, the open space there to the north that preserve. So what's the choreography of that? How do you flow through that space, create opportunities for engaging, lingering? That's, you know, in the north side, that's really what makes our neighborhood, is that we have that social life that connects us, to varying degrees. It may just be hello.
A key example of that is North Market Square Park, which is surrounded by various kinds of housing, and it's a place to which parents and kids, et cetera, and others go. They enjoy being there, because it's an attractive part of the public realm. And I would hope that the developer could incorporate such a space, appropriately sized, such a space in this project.
I'm glad you brought that up, Jim, because that is the last point, is with traditional neighborhoods, they have a center. They traditionally always have a center, and, you know, that's what the north side's is, North Market Square, symbolically, I would say. So, yeah, to the degree, and we can create that, it doesn't have to be large, but, you know, somewhere where we, you know, if something should happen, where would people go in this neighborhood to kind of be with their neighbors? Or if they wanted to have an event that, you know, was large enough to, for such a thing to happen, to have a neighborhood gathering, you know, that's where they would go.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say? I think we've done the best we can do. Thank you, commissioners, for coming.
Thank you.
For sharing your views about this.
Nice discussion. Thanks for having us. Appreciate it.
I guess we can move on. Well, wait for you folks to, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I can see him.
Yeah, you can keep an eye on him.
Yeah, check out what he's doing.
Okay. All right, good deal. So we should turn to clarification of agenda items.
I guess, how are we, how are we addressing this in the meeting?
Sorry, what do you mean?
The carbon.
Oh, yeah. Well, I, yeah, I think we should pull it for separate consideration.
Okay. You mentioned that, but...
Which one's that?
The carbon, fee, and dividend.
Oh, okay.
So I should make a note of that as well. Thank you for asking about that, Casey.
One item that I had, the item raised a question in my mind had, is 4F5, having to do with the parking meters on the 100 block of South Johnson. With all the construction work going on around there, I'm a little bit concerned with how many parking spaces we may have lost with the fencing that's gone up around some of these construction sites. And so I'm worried a little bit, you know, because, like, New Pioneer kind of relies on street parking, they don't have much off-street parking. So I mean, I think this is good. It sort of reminded me, oh, good, we have more metered parking around there. But I began to ask myself, is it enough? You know, has New Pioneer contacted the city and raised concerns about the fact that, you know, parking is, and I don't know what the, if all that parking has been lost for a year and a half or what, but a fair amount has been taken out.
Yeah, not to my knowledge, they haven't contacted us, but that, it's not to say they might have talked to somebody else in the city, that just hadn't been reported up to our office. Certainly, there's a lot of work going on on this corridor now. For the most part, those metered spots along the city hall, frontage there will be gone for the duration of the project. I think the ones immediately, I'd be to the far south end, where we have our parking lot by the New Pie entrance, could be restored sooner. Obviously, they're doing some off-site utility work right now to prep for the project. But given the fact that we are losing that back lot, we're also going to have to take all of our city deliveries in through that area, too, so that if we are able to open it up, I imagine it'll be closed at different increments throughout the project. This particular item, 4F5, is related to the conversation, of course, that you had a couple, a month or so ago, around the College Green area. Staff looked at that and felt comfortable moving forward with this one segment with the idea that we can see how it goes, how those meters are used, and if in the future we need to place additional meters in that vicinity around the park, that we'd be able to do that.
Jeff, with regard to item 4D3, the sanitary sewer easement on the corner of Bayard and Lusk, did you have a chance to talk with, to communicate with Karen Southard about that, so that they knew this would be on?
I let them know it was on the agenda. She acknowledged the email, but didn't ask any questions.
Okay, good. Anything else with regard to the agenda? It's pretty short.
I don't think that we've picked up before, so.
I would point out one thing, and I apologize if we've mentioned this before, but I think this is the first one. You're setting a hearing on a University City sale for 521 governor, and I believe that this would be the first one that we have increased the deed restriction period from 20 years to 30 years on. That was part of the discussion at the Affordable, with the Affordable Housing Action Plan.
Good. Okay, info packet discussion, November 22nd.
Thanks memo, thanks to Stephanie for the memo, IP, too.
You mean with regard to the report on racial equity?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions in regards to that. Some of the questions are related to tonight, I'm just going to go through a list of them. And I don't necessarily have the page numbers, because I'm looking at my notes, and for some reason, I'm not able to flip back and forth between how I marked in the agenda, how I marked in my notes, so I apologize. You know, I looked at the, basically, a lot of it was focused on the population, and so I did write that down, 83% white, 6% black, 7% Asian, and 5% Hispanic. I mention that because as it relates to board and commissions, I think we are direly underrepresented. Now, I know that 130 people were surveyed, 80 responded, I know that's a survey situation, and so, you know, I don't know how we get that rate up, as far as making sure that we can, you know, adequately look at our numbers, but when I looked at our representation overall, it looked like we had 1%, and again, help me if I'm reading this wrong, 1% Hispanic in 2014 and 15, and 0% in 2016, and then 1% Asian in 2016, none in 2015 and 14, or, yeah, none in 2015 and 14. You know, that's a problem, and one of the things I just want to focus on, especially, you know, as we're thinking about our strategic plan around social justice and racial equity, is ensuring that people, the people that we are, I don't want to use the word dictating, but the people that were legislating, or the people that are ultimately going to be told or be addressed with these particular issues are a part of the conversation. And this speaks to me that they're not a part of the conversation, and that's a problem for me. And so as we think about, even when I looked at the board and commission packet that we had to go through as far as deliberation tonight, I can tell you right now that that was one of my focus areas. I wonder whether or not that can be a key focus area, similar to where we have, you know, I know that that's legally required, two male or one nun, or two female and one nun, and whether or not we can require that as far as have an additional level or, I don't know, component of diversity that's added on there across all of our board and commissions. I'm not necessarily focused just on, you know, the Human Rights Commission, or the HCDC, or whatever, because I would even question to know whether or not the diversity that we do see within the board and commission diagram speaks to the boards and commissions across all of them. And so that's another concern that I have.
On that point, Eleanor, does state law mandate that we do, that we have a balance, a gender balance, or, but it's only gender balance, right, with regard to state law?
And the council chose, that applies to board and commissions required by state law, and the council chose to extend that to all boards and commissions?
But there's no state requirement with regard to...
No.
...membership by other members of the community, right?
And there's nothing prohibiting.
Under state law?
Yeah, there would be nothing prohibiting us adding diversity.
There's nothing under state law that would prohibit it. We'd have to look at it in terms of other issues.
Yeah, I take the point. I certainly was looking at that in this particular case with regard to... I certainly was looking at that in this particular case with regard to Hispanic or Latino representation and seeing zero, and yet, I don't know, 6.5 percent or something like that of our population is Hispanic, so, yeah.
Right. Couple of other questions. This has to do with Iowa City workforce. You know, where are we at with the diversity of staff? Can we see the breakdown by employment categories, so disaggregating that data by employment categories? Having a more clear conversation as far as what are the barriers, and then what are the cities have done? And so, I know that some of us attended the GARE training. This is a part of the GARE training that I attended with Davenport that specifically focused on what they're doing as far as diversity. I know that their numbers didn't necessarily represent what they were doing, because I know it's tough to see the diversification in staff, but some type of... I mean, the report is obviously appreciated, looking at the numbers, but what that looks like, I think, is important as well as far as what it looks like in different employment categories. That's something that, you know, I look at the school district. While you can say we're doing well from a diversity standpoint across the board, that diversity is heavily located in our support staff and not necessarily in our teachers at all. And so, having that, so I can make more of an apples-to-apples comparison, I think is important. And one of the...
There's no difficulty in providing that information to us, is there?
No, I don't think... I think we can do that. I think some of it was probably been shared, excuse me, in other ways, and hopefully, you've seen through some of the reports that we've done, that we are putting a huge emphasis on that in our recruitment processes. We've redone a lot of things, whether it's police and fire testing or just our normal processes to try to do better in that area. But we can pull together a report and get that to you.
Sure, thanks. And then last, this is just a comment, and I know that we are kind of going back to Jeff's point. We're doing some of the things in those areas, but if you look at the traffic stops, you know, several populations of Asians and Blacks in our community have drastically different numbers. This isn't a surprise to anybody. This definitely isn't a surprise to me since it's one of some of the things I campaigned on four years ago or five years ago now, whatever that is, four years ago. So, I mean, you know, if you're a 20 to 29-year-old in our community, I mean, it's tough. And I know that's not necessarily... That's an unduplicated or that's a duplicated count that was given, and so, it could be similar... I think it was a duplicated count that was given, so similar individuals could be racking up charges as it relates to traffic stops, but it just seemed like that number was definitely out of proportion as compared with other demographic groups. And there's some other questions here, but those are my major concerns or questions I wanted to highlight.
Anyone else with regard to the November 22nd packet? If not, how about the November 30 packet?
I wanted to address IP5, and for our audience out there, this was an article in which indicates that Moody's warned cities to address climate risks or faced downgrades to the city's financial position. I think that's an extremely important development. Jeff, you were the one that shared that with us. You know, normally, you think of climate change, you know, we've always sort of intuitively known that it does have a financial impact. We all know that, but there are... There is a certain segment that sort of tends to look at that as sort of more of an idealistic, and let's get back to business, brass tacks. But I think what this shows is that in the age that we are now living in, efforts like our Climate Change Task Force is actually critical to sort of maintaining our AAA bond rating. So, I think it's really good to get that information out there moving forward, and I thank Jeff for sharing that. I think it really matches two things we're trying to achieve and maintain, the AAA bond rating coupled with our environmental efforts, and it's nice to see convergence there happening.
So, it did beg the question, how are we... What are we doing in regards to it? I mean, obviously, we're doing things...
We're not on the coast. I mean, if you've read the whole thing, I mean, the fact that we're not on the coast...
It did specifically, yeah. So, it targeted some communities in general that could be an issue.
Right, that are much more vulnerable.
Yeah, it's looking at disaster risk, particularly disasters related to climate change, weather-related, and certainly, we're susceptible, and we know that, to increased flooding. We expect to see it, so we've been pretty aggressive since 2008 in implementing our flood strategy. But I do realize that the article was kind of focused on the coasts there, but I think if Moody's is certainly asking those questions in those high-risk areas, they're going to start looking at our area too because of the experience that we've had along the Iowa River. So, the flood buyout program, all the infrastructure changes that we've made to better protect ourselves, those are all critically important.
And will that, I mean, so, I mean, I agree with your point, but will that be incorporated, or will we be looking at that as far as our next, like, audit or whatever around Moody's?
Yeah, you know, Moody's will... When we go to sell bonds again, they'll engage in a rating call with us, and we never really know exactly what questions they will ask. We're just anticipating they will, so we'll be prepared to talk about what we've done. And I think we're frankly in a very good spot, but to Rockne's point, it reinforces the emphasis that the council has placed on climate change.
I'd like to make a comment about IP number four, which is basically a report that Genoys Swaim and Alicia Trimble provided us concerning the Sangsay Gilmore House at 109 East Market. Assuming you all had a chance to read that short but well-argued report. And I want to tell you that Jeff and I met with President Harold, Rod Leonardz, Peter Mathis today to talk about that, and I started, and I'm going to provide a very concise summary of this, Jeff, if you want to elaborate on anything, please do. I started by urging the President to use creativity and ingenuity to preserve this, what we understand is the oldest surviving house in Iowa City. A house that has strong historical connections for both the university and for the city. And by that, I meant building harmoniously around the Sangsay Gilmore House rather than demolishing it. So, that led to a frank and fruitful discussion about the complexities associated with what the university is currently doing and what the alternatives are. We agreed that they and we would meet again after we've had a chance to discuss the alternatives more thoroughly, and it's my understanding that we have a few months to do that. So, I didn't... I don't want to go into great detail about that, but it was a pretty fruitful discussion. Jeff, do you want to elaborate in any way? Yeah. Each of the alternatives has its complexities and upsides and downsides. All right. IP6, KXIC interviews. Could I volunteer for January the 3rd, please?
I'd like January the 10th.
I was waiting. December 20th, I mean, I didn't know if I... Usually, I'd try to jump in, somebody snatched all three of them.
You get two. You get two, Kingsley. Spread them out.
December 27th? I figured I'd take that one since I'll be in town.
You're not going to New York for the pin straight ball?
I'll take December 20th.
I'll do... Has February 7th been taken yet?
Not yet.
I'll take February 7th.
I can do January 31st. I also have in my notes yet, maybe, you know, is out here, maybe wanted introduction or something along those lines.
Yeah, she needs to have...
I was gonna say, choose one for her, yeah.
So, why I put that one is maybe she can do it with, and then if she decides to or wants to do it by herself, we can just switch.
And we need to have one of these set aside for a department head or a pair of department heads?
That's true.
I don't... Just pick one.
December 13th, January 17th, and January 24th left.
I'll go ahead and take January 24th.
I need to be in that mix again somewhere, but what were the dates?
December 13th.
13th and January 17th.
I think I have a conflict on December 13th, and I don't have my calendar in front of me, so...
You're saying that one could be a department head meeting?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, so...
December 13th.
December 13th, all right, if that's okay with staff.
Sure.
You don't want me two weeks in a row.
Pauline's gonna have to have one of these.
January 17th is all that's left.
It's hers unless she can't do it, and then we'll figure something out.
Where are you gonna be 27th? You gonna be here?
January 27th?
December.
I won't be here. Good start.
Well, I figured, but...
Are we good to go on that? Excellent.
Oh, go ahead, John.
I think we're at council updates on assigned boards, commissions, et cetera.
I was gonna quickly mention IP10, just wanna, because Charlie's in the audience. I appreciate the changes, or at least the motion for the changes for the HCC Commission. You know, change, I think, Charlie, you can correct me. I can tell by your eyebrows either going up and down whether or not it's right. You changed that devalued criteria, and I think that was a really good move as far as, you know, how we can focus and provide more balance as it relates to some of the things. And so, it was a change from reducing from 50 points to 35 points, and I thought it was a good change. And increasing from 20 to 30 as far as impact and benefits. Sorry, missed that part as well.
Okay, anything else on that information packet? All righty, council updates on assigned boards, et cetera. Rockne, could you start?
Yeah, I'll start with two things. One, I wanted to follow up on our MPJOC meeting in which one of the very interesting things that we discussed was this concept of rail between the city of Iowa City and North Liberty. And I tell you, MPJOC, I think it's one of the most important bodies that not a lot of people know about. It's essentially a planning body that various members from local surrounding communities participate in to ensure that we adequately have input into these things. And one of the issues that came up was the request for a third funding study, is my understanding. Is that what we're looking at, Susan? And we were asked to sort of go back and sort of caucus between our boards to see whether we would support that, and I'm hoping we will. And I gotta tell you, I'm really excited about it, at least the number that... And this is, by the way, if it ever happens, five, six, seven years into the future, so it's not immediate. But I think that the concept of $30 to $40 million spread out over all the various communities with an existing writing way, it was just really exciting to me. And so, if we can do anything to move that ball forward, and I understand that it's the third stage that we have to sort of at least weigh in our input, so hopefully, we would be willing to support that. And then the other thing was, is that we finished up a great successful year with the city of literature, finished up with a wonderful meeting at the View, which was actually my first time up there. Beautiful facility, it's fun to see the skyline of the city of Iowa City, and it was just a great, great experience. One concept that came up is that they are... We are now in the process of going to have a short story vending machine type thing, where if you're waiting in various parts throughout the city of Iowa City, you'll be able to push a button and get a little two to three-minute story that you can read. So, evidently, they have this at Penn State, so sort of stay tuned. You're gonna be able to...
Hashtag's only in Iowa City.
Yes, and so, we had some concerns about the sustainability issue in terms of having this paper that we're dispensing, but they'll figure that out. So, stay tuned for that. That was a really exciting thing that we do focus on. So, hopefully, we'll support the third stage. I don't know if there's another time to bring that up, John, but I was really excited about it.
Well, is there any opposition to that, or do we need to discuss it more thoroughly with the staff?
If I recall, I think I have the authority to authorize that type of expenditure, and I think I have. In the last two studies, I, unless you tell me otherwise, will be willing to participate.
I feel we'd like you to do it. I want to also note that Ryan Semph and I had a discussion about light rail going up to North Liberty and about the chamber's interest in that, and, you know, I agreed. So, you know, I think our council is fully on board with the idea of at least investigating it more thoroughly. Okay, Terry?
Paratransit. I went to my last paratransit meeting, and pretty much the main focus was that there was a delay on getting the last two new buses into service, and it was mainly just computer problems with the computer pads. And supposedly, we have some pads that will work, and so, they'll get those in. They're very appreciative of the city of Iowa City, you know, leading the way with bringing all these new buses online. So, that was the main focus of it. The rest of it was mainly going over new regulations for writers and providers, how they can deal with the changes in the laws, and they're still kind of in limbo there. They'll have to wait and see, but... And you'll have to put somebody on there, but I think Pauline is interested, so... And they... I think somebody has already talked to her from the paratransit that would be very interested in her taking that position, so... It was a great group, so it was a lot of fun.
CGCC hasn't met in a while, and I miss my rules committee partner. We've done a lot of work.
It's been exhausting. You knocked it out of the ballpark.
It's been tough, so...
We can summon you for additional meetings.
Exactly.
We had another steering committee meeting for the access center yesterday. Moving forward, there's... We're getting to the point of, I would say, a lot of the nitty-gritty. I think the big decision has kind of been made, as I mentioned, that the county is... They have a white paper that... Have you received that, Jeff?
I did. It'll... I believe it'll be in your next info packet.
Okay, thank you. Kind of a white paper from the county on how they see this moving forward. We'll need to have some discussion on that, on the potential 28E agreements and our involvement with that. The steering committee is more with the providers, so the nonprofits that are involved, and people from the university and particularly, emergency medicine. And so, really looking at a lot of the... Starting to try and figure out a lot of the details. There's an incredible, incredible complexity with this thing in terms of the providing of services and the contracts and the licensing and the codes that are used to get reimbursement from the insurance companies and Medicaid and... So, yeah. So, we're just starting to go down that rabbit hole, if you will, on all those details, so... Yeah.
Throw a rope down.
It's gonna be challenging, but that can be happening at the same time as the county is trying to figure out a facility, so we can at least move kind of simultaneously on those tracks now.
John?
One other item that came up at the MPOJC related to the study that Iowa DOT has conducted is their belief and feeling that widening I-380 from the interchange to Cedar Rapids from four lanes to six lanes is necessary. And, you know, most of us are on MPOJC. But, you know, as a major city within the corridor, I don't feel that benefits us as a city. I don't think it benefits us as a state. I asked what this would cost. They didn't give us a price tag, but, you know, I'm a firm believer that when you have congestion, you know, whatever level and however you interpret that congestion to be, the first thing you want to try to do is address it at the demand side rather than adding supply, because, you know, coming from California, I've seen the future and it doesn't work. You widen a freeway, it fills up really fast, and then we'll be complaining about the six lanes of congestion rather than the four. So, you know, I don't know. I'm just passing on the information. It is a concern to me. It would take, I think, clearly, a concerted effort to, you know...
Stop it.
To stop it, although I did see an article on City Observatory. I don't know how many of you know of that website. It's pretty interesting, but, you know, there are practices, congestion pricing. Basically, what we're doing is we're providing a free good, and that's not the way to approach congestion. The way to approach congestion is to say, well, we're gonna... You know, if you want to drive this corridor at commute hours, it may cost you a little bit more. So, people figure out that, hmm, maybe I better carpool, or maybe I better drive a little bit earlier or a little bit later. There are so many ways congestion can be reduced short of widening the roadway, and yet, that's where it stands.
So, the MPo has no control over this, right?
Well, I mean, our previous, when it came up about two years ago, was the interchange. And I know Susan...
You and I voted against that.
Voted against that, and, you know, in talking with Ken, in fact, I think Ken may have brought this up at our last meeting. If we as an MPo were to vote no on the widening, Caltrans would probably find another way to fund it.
Not Caltrans, but...
I'm sorry. I should tell you about California. It slips into my...
Same, Jeff.
It's my California slip. I sometimes forget. So, I don't know, but it's still as a position, you know, I don't think that should mean we back down if we believe that there are better, more cost-efficient ways of addressing congestion and let the chips fall, but, you know, it does suggest to me, do we want to try to reach out to Cedar Rapids, because I think Cedar Rapids would be impacted as well, and see if we can't build bridges and coalitions, you know, to address this.
Well, and quite frankly, every taxpayer in the state of Iowa, and even nationally, is going to be impacted. I mean, more... is going to be impacted, I mean, more statewide, because this is going to be state dollars and federal dollars, and it's going to be, I mean, you know, we're looking at close to $400 million just for that interchange, which personally, I think is absolutely absurd. Slow, you know, slow down, slow the traffic down. And so, you know, this is money that could be going to other things in the state of Iowa rather than, you know, the interchange, or putting in an extra two lanes. And they were, they were real candid that the reason they were going on the outside was to preserve the right-of-way before it gets developed, so if they needed eight lanes, the next two lanes could go on the inside. So, they're, they're already thinking eight lanes eventually.
That's nuts. So, i- if it were up to me, and if I thought it would do any good, I'd say, let's, as a council, and as you six representatives of the council on the MPO, say, we don't want this. We don't support it.
There's no decision before us at this point, so, and unfortunately, I'm concerned with the way these things work, that by the time there's a decision in front of us, it really has already been made at the state level.
And I would say, for me, I mean, there's, I know you're about to go, Jim, so I'll keep it brief. I'm not necessarily on the side of not adding additional lanes, you know, and so, I mean, I get where you're coming from, John, and so I appreciate that comment, because you have lived in, you have lived in it where it hasn't worked, and I've lived in it when you could, I mean, it ultimately hasn't worked as well, in the same way that you're thinking of it, but, you know, I, you know, I, I don't know, I still have some concerns.
It's never worked anywhere well, but anyhow, we don't need to talk about that anymore. All right, I have nothing to report with regard to boards and commissions. There was no Convention and Visitors Bureau Board meeting, no Partnership for Alcohol Safety meeting. Anything else? All right, we'll adjourn the work session and get back together at 7:00.